All right. We ready, Doug? Okay. All right, we came out of closed session. I'll have our city attorney report on any action.
Thank you, Mayor. The city council has returned from closed session with no reportable action taken.
Great, thank you. Okay, if you could stand with me for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to start off by giving thanks for our wonderful community, our great city, and the chance to represent this community. We are all part of the same community and must continue to work together to keep our community safe, prosperous, financially sound, respectful. Like to specifically give thanks to our first responders, especially the Los Alamos PD and the fire authority. They keep us safe and are a huge part of our community. Also like to give thanks to our volunteers in our community. And I'd also like to ask for strength, especially to new and soon-to-be new council members, to be strong and always do what is required and right in the best interests of the community and the city, notwithstanding any personal feelings or desires. Thank you.
Could councilman join me?
Yep.
Down front. So I'm first going to invite Blair and family up. Anybody affiliated with Petrini Pizza, come on up. There you go, does that work? There. And they're closed tonight, bummer, huh? All right. So the city of Los Alamos believes that small businesses are the cornerstone of our economy and the bond that holds communities together. According to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently 29 million small businesses in the United States that represent more than 99% of American companies, create 62% of net new jobs, and generate half of private gross domestic product. The city of Los Alamos holds a special place in our hearts for our local small businesses and continues to treasure the important ingredient in our economic success. Petrini Pizza Napolitana, I did that, butchered it. Okay. Is a wonderful representative of the small business community in Los Alamos. The city of Los Alamos gladly presents Blair Petrini and family of the Petrini Pizza with this proclamation as a representative of the small business owners of Los Alamos who took the risk to follow their dreams and contribute to our special community. And if you know anything about Blair and her family, it's been a year of journeys. And they have come out of it as one of our most successful small businesses. I'm proud to call you friend and pizza supplier for my tummy. And it's just a great example of you guys had a dream and you made it happen and you're here locally, and we're just extremely proud of that. Thanks. Would you like to say anything? I'll give you a mic.
Okay, just, I just want to say that I, my family, it's an honor to be in this community. And I know you guys hear this all the time, but this community here is unlike really anywhere I've ever been. And just the amount of, you know, people, volunteers, people that are giving back to the community and just very involved, I think is a testament to the community itself. Hey, buddy. And our family is just happy to be a part and to carry on my husband's legacy to the best of our ability. And I'm very thankful for, it takes a village, obviously, and especially for the restaurant. And my son has taken over the main part of being pizza-olo, so we're trying to keep him in tip-top shape and working pretty hard. But anyway, I'm just thankful for everyone that has given towards this. And it's just a huge honor, so thank you so much. We're just very happy to have received this award, so thank you.
And you're a Los Al graduate, correct? So you bleed Los Al Griffins. Very nice. All right, come on in for a picture. the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Remarks are to be limited to not more than five minutes per speaker. And I've got two blue cards. Todd Cottle.
Honorable Mayor, would it be okay if I went before Todd? We're talking on the same subject but different.
Sure. Should have gone along, okay. Yeah, Les Johnson, thank you.
Great, thank you. Honorable councilmembers, thank you for the opportunity to come before you this evening and speak to you. I'm Les Johnson from T and B Planning. I'm here representing the owners of Lamson Park Place, which is the property on Lamson Avenue referred to as West Ed. Lamson Park Place purchased the property from GSA about a year ago with the goal of redeveloping that property for residential use. After careful consideration of several factors, including the city's housing element, they filed applications, we filed applications with the city this past summer, and that development proposes 246 residential units on that 12.3-acre piece of property. The units include 55 detached courtyard units, 114 townhomes, and 77 affordable multifamily apartment homes. Additionally, there'll be about 557 parking spaces on the site, as well as common open space. That includes two tot lots, two barbecue areas, and a number of multiple gathering spaces, passive-use gathering spaces within the site. An EIR, or Environmental Impact Report, is being prepared for that project. We just had a notice of preparation period that concluded earlier this month, and that was a 30-day comment period. There were a number of comments received from neighboring residents, concerns with impacts to traffic upon Lamson, vehicles, parking within the College Park East neighborhood, Arbor Park parking, especially on Saturday mornings during AYSO. Noise, aesthetics, and other matters were brought up at that time. You like to receive some of those comments. I want to assure you tonight that all of those comments are being, that have been received are being fully considered by our team. For example, we currently have a traffic analysis underway for the project. We have retained a national parking expert to look at Arbor Park. They've already been out on Saturdays, two Saturdays, as well as during the weekday evenings to see firsthand the activity there. That same parking expert is also evaluating the proposed project with regards to the onsite parking and the 557 parking spaces proposed for the project to make sure that that's adequate and sufficient. Prior to that notice of preparation period, Lamson Park Place already committed to dedicating land to allow for the expansion of Arbor Park parking. We believe it's important to be open and transparent as we go forward with this process and provide the opportunity to have constructive and meaningful engagement and interaction with all interested parties. Lamson Park Place has scheduled a community open house meeting this coming Wednesday, the 16th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., and that'll be held at the Seal Beach Ayers Hotel at 12:850 Seal Beach Boulevard. We see Wednesday's open house meeting as probably the first of several, providing an opportunity to be open and transparent and communicative with the community going forward. I'd like to conclude my comments with letting you know that we have been and continue to be available and open to meeting and conversing with anyone who has any interest in this project going forward. I know that the city manager, Mr. Noda, and most of the staff have our contact information, and we welcome that opportunity to speak with any of you, any of your constituents, or anybody that has an interest in this project. So with that, thank you once again for the opportunity to address you this evening.
Great, thank you. And Mr. Cottle, you're up now.
Good evening. My name is Todd Cottle, and I'm a principal with CNC Development. CNC Development specializes in the development of workforce housing and affordable housing communities for families and seniors. Based in the city of Tustin, we've been developing affordable housing in Orange County for over 30 years. And I'm excited to be here this evening to briefly highlight the affordable housing component of Lamson Park Place and CNC Development's involvement. In addition to providing for needed for sale housing in the community, Lamson Park Place will provide 77 affordable rental units on approximately two acres on the western edge of the property. Affordability levels within the community will range between 30% to 70% of county median income for Orange County. It'll be provided in a mixture of one, two, and three-bedroom units. An onsite manager will live at the property, providing direct oversight for ongoing operations, both during the day and after hours and on the weekends. Onsite resident services will also be provided within the community for the residents of the affordable community. Units at this range of affordability, in conjunction with the market rate for sale component within Lamson Park Place, will allow us to meet the needs of Los Alamos residents at a variety of life stages and also income levels. It also will go a ways in assisting the city to meet its state mandated Rena requirements through this development. CNC Development, in addition to being in business for 30 years, approaches each of our affordable communities with a long-term in mind. It's important to note that CNC Development has never sold one of the affordable communities that we've developed. We are a long-term partner for the community, for our residents, and we make our decisions relative to project design, material selection, with a focus on durability, and we also focus on and understand what it's like to own and manage the building for the long term. CNC self-performs our onsite management within our own organization at each of our affordable communities. This gives us control over our property operations and also insight over to what's going on at the property at any given time, ensuring compliance not only with rules and regulations, but also with the affordability covenants. With this, we look forward to continuing our work with city staff and appreciate this opportunity to address you this evening. We're available to answer any questions in the future, and we'd like to thank you for your time.
Great, thank you.
Mayor, members of the city council, my name is Art DeBolt. I'm a resident of the city. I'm going to comment briefly on item 13C. I don't, I can't remain for the full meeting. But anyway, I would like to voice my opposition to the request that the city celebrate the Fourth of July on a date other than the Fourth of July. John Adams, one of the founding fathers of our great country, wrote to his wife that "this date will be celebrated by succeeding generations as the great anniversary festival." And that celebration should include pomp and parade, games, sports, guns, not in California, bells, bonfires, and illuminations, fireworks, from one end of this continent to the other. The national holiday is July 4. It's not July 3 or July the 5th, it's the 4th. For this council to consider and then change to any other date, in my opinion, is nonsense, and I dare say simply un-American. The council should have no part in this degradation of this defining historical event, the birth of this great country. Our city does not need to be in the national news again. If this request did in fact come from the Joint Forces Commander, Base Commander, a serving officer in the armed forces, then you should dismiss it out of hand and let him or her own it and have it on their own military record. Today fireworks are one of the most common hallmarks of the Fourth of July celebrations dating back to the very first Fourth of July party in 1777. Apart from the shooting off of fireworks, if there are other ancillary activities on the base that are creating a burden to the military personnel, then you should work with the base command to reduce or eliminate those burdens. But don't change the date to something other than the 4th, nor stop the shooting off of the fireworks. In the early, in the 1970s and 80s, the public could only walk onto the base through the main gate on the Fourth of July and then sit at the west, just at the west end of the gate in the big lot there. No cars were allowed. We brought blankets, lawn chairs, and our children, and our children got to see the celebrations, that is, the Fourth of July. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? All right, we'll close that and come to council comments. I'll have Jordan go first.
Oh, thank you. Perfect. Let's see, since the last meeting, I've attended two OC sanitation board meetings, and I've had the lunch with the school district, which I really enjoy. And I've attended several events, including the trunk or treat, as well as this Saturday, you know, the concert and the sunset, I guess, on, in Los Al. So keep up the good work. I really enjoy those events, and it looks like that volunteering for the sanitation department or whatever the board is, it's a pretty big commitment, but so far, so good.
All right.
Sure. The last month, I attended the Budget Standing Committee meeting with Mayor Hasselbrink, where we came up with the pension pay-down plan that we're going to be talking about today in conjunction with Chet and Craig as well. I attended the Los Alamos Community Foundation meeting, where we planned casino night for this past Saturday and then decided to postpone it to February 11th, is that right? To be determined, all right. I was close. I also attended Second Saturday, stopped by Second Saturdays this past Saturday. As always, it was a really cool event, great music, and also the trunk or treat event as well, which was really a lot of fun for the whole family and brought cousins and a bunch of other relatives. They all had a blast, so great job as usual. Thank you.
Tricia, you're up.
Oh, I am. Okay, well.
Just tell us what you've been doing.
In the last month, I became a city council member. So here I am. I've attended the trunk or treat. I was originally a commissioner for the Parks and Rec, so I always understand how much Emmeline and her staff does to contribute to making it such a successful event. I have had my children speak with good old Chief Claiborne about e-bikes, which I'm assuming we'll be discussing in the future, about the safety of it, being my children attend Oak. I have went around to my neighborhood and really got to know a lot of my neighbors and how happy they are living in Los Alamos as well as I have been. So that is it so far. Hi, everybody, I am Tricia Murphy. And they didn't even have to get me a new plaque either, see?
All right, Tanya. Enlighten us.
I went to the very well-attended Good Morning Los Alamos. It was really nice. I like to go without a badge sometimes, just to, because not everybody knows who I am, and just kind of hear what people are saying. And you can kind of hear the businesses saying that they really enjoy the opportunity to meet with our law enforcement, to meet with our city staff, and to really get to know them on a more personal level. I went to my mosquito and vector control meetings, and I was also at trunk or treat in costume, in the rain, and I handed out over 5,000 pieces of candy. I was the only one left with candy. I will have you know. I was giving out to adults. I was the adults' favorite stop. It was outstanding. I think what I'll do next year, though, is I'm going to bring my own little stickers, because everybody asked me for a sticker, and I don't have a sticker, because I'm just a lowly candy slanger. So I think that's what I'll do next year. I'm going to ask permission first, but I got tired of telling the kids I didn't have stickers. I was like, no, I got candy. You want a sticker? Give them like the smiley face, something, I don't know. I've gone to a couple of the Los Al Sunset Saturdays. Those are great. Like, if there's anybody in our community that has not gone yet, please, by all means. They have live music. The dude had real instruments this past Saturday. Like, the food is great, the environment is really nice, they have things out for the children to do, and it's enclosed off, so they can't necessarily get away too quickly. So it's super nice. I invite you to come out. You'll probably see me. I might stop for a picture, if you can catch me. I went to the working group for the city and the school district, and that's only a big deal, because that's recent, where our city manager and our superintendent and our chief of police and the different assistant superintendents can sit in a room and talk about what's best for the entire community, not just, well, this is what we need to do for the school, because everybody moves in for the school. But, or this is what's good for the city, y'all better obey, because your school is in my city. But we really collaborate. It makes my heart super happy. And then I went to a Veterans Day celebration at St. Isidore's Historical Plaza yesterday. And I would just like to mention, they had this beautiful display out that literally honors every single person that has served. You were a nurse, we got something for you. You were in the Air Force, you were a SEAL, you were a special frog, whatever your station was in the military, any way that you served, they have a display for you, and they do it completely free. They travel around to wherever they're summoned, and they set this beautiful display up, and it's completely free to whomever asks them to come. And I feel like that's so honoring, that like, how better do you honor the people who give, you know, some give a little, some gave all, than to really let you see the entirety of it, the totality of it? So I was very, I was honored and I was humbled, and that was all that I've done since the last time y'all seen me.
Little slow, huh?
Little bit.
Okay. All right. I also attended the Good Morning Los Al, which was a great event. A lot of people were there. I thought it was really well-attended. You got burritos, so if anything, you just get a, go for the burrito. But just a really good overview of what's going on with the city. Our keynote speaker, our city manager, did a great job, just kind of keeping up with everybody that was in attendance and stuff, so that was great. Hope to see more of those in the future. A couple Friday nights ago, I was invited to a local leader's Shabbat dinner at the Jewish Community Center in Long Beach, and we went through the whole Shabbat dinner. It was fabulous and explained all the different meanings of everything and symbols, and it was just really good, and they're really making a concentrated effort to do an outreach to make sure that we're, we're making sure that there's no messages going out that would be contradictory to our Jewish family and our Jewish heritage. For OCFA, the board did approve finally the authorization to buy two new helicopters. So it's on an ultra-fast speed, which means we should have them in about two years, which is always nice in government work. We did extend, or the Budget and Finance Committee this week recommended to extend the FIRIS program, which is the regional intel, the intelligence, regional intelligence, help me out here, buddy.
Yes.
Yes, it's a very smart plane that flies over the fires and tells everybody, and tells the boots on the ground how far they should be evacuating, what's the, they have an aerial view of the fire, so it just, it makes it really helpful for the people on the ground to be able to do what they need to be doing. So that's extended through June of 2023, and at that time, Cal OES, which is headquartered right here, will be taking over the management and contract of that. We also recommended to extend the supertanker program, which is the CH-47, very heavy supertanker, and two other helitankers. That's with the grant from Southern California Edison for $9.5 million. And what's cool about that is those supertankers are housed right at our base. It's to help the region all the way up to Ventura County and all the way down to San Diego County, and we happen to be the central location, and we have a base that said we've got some space, so it's pretty cool that we get to be a part of that program. It's called the Quick Reaction Force Program. And I think that is it. I wanted to welcome our newest council member. She's going to fit in just fine. Just to even the score, it's girls three, boys two, just if anybody was interested. And on to city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm actually going to ask Director Noda to give us a brief update about some of the events we have coming up here for the holiday season.
The mic wasn't on.
I can just talk though.
Doug, do you just want to hand her the hand mic?
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. We would like to invite the community out to Winter Wonderland Saturday, December 3rd. This is the Memorial Care at Miller Children's and Women's Hospital, Long Beach, Winter Wonderland, presented by Universal Waste Systems. Please bundle up and bring out the entire family. We've got snow play, snow sledding, we've got our school performance groups onstage, our tree lighting, we've got Santa and Mrs. Claus, we've got our vendors, inflatables, and our new sensory calming activity area for families with special needs. And we want to also remind, we've got holiday decorating contests coming up, so get your holiday lights and decorations ready, and we've got Santa calls. All of this is in your winter brochure that should be coming in the mail if you haven't got it already, or also on the city's website at cityoflosaludos.org. Thank you.
You got nothing?
That is all, Mayor.
Wow, okay. All right, on to warrants. Any comments?
I just, I just have one question. And City Manager Simmons, I know we talked about this earlier, but just for the benefit of the residents, I saw on the warrants that there was a charge for Clean Street for about $9,500 in August of 2022. As I understand it, and I think, and you clarified this, and perhaps you can clarify it for the benefit of residents too, is, you know, when I saw that, I thought, well, I thought the contract with our waste hauler provided that they were paying for street sweeping, and you clarified to me that they are.
Yes, sir, actually. With the negotiation of this last contract, and again, credit to Director Noda for the work that he and the team put into this, we decided collectively that it was better to actually have the city be in charge of the actual contract itself. And so while the UWS is paying for the contract, we actually are the ones that manage it. And so therefore, we're able to handle any issues that come up, anything that has to do with performance out on the streets, we can actually refer to that quickly as opposed to having to go through another step or bureaucracy in order to get to the final answer.
But they end up reimbursing us.
But they do end up paying for it, sir.
Okay, thank you. No further questions.
Any other questions? Can I have a motion?
I'll move the warrants.
Second.
Second. Roll call, please.
Mayor Hasselbrink?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Doby?
Yes.
Councilmember Churco?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Nefolda?
Yes.
All right, on to consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be acted upon by one motion unless a council member requests separate action on a specific item. Does anybody want to pull any items?
Just 11I, please.
Okay, do you just want clarification?
Yeah, no, just, just if we could get a staff report, I think this is, it's important that the public knows the good work that we're doing, and especially when it comes to playgrounds, I think something to get excited about, so if we could just have a quick staff report on that item, it'd be great.
Sir, this is actually a, and I'm going to ask Director Noda to step in when I eventually go off track here, but as part of the city's plan to rejuvenate our park network, this will be actually the first park that we are actually able to go in and touch completely. It will call for a complete redesign in order to make it an all-inclusive park, where we're actually able to ensure that all children will be able to play, along with ADA upgrades, security upgrades, and then also just a complete refreshing of the entire area. You'll notice that this is for project management and for project design, this contract here. The important thing to note here also is that this contract is going to be paid for out of CDBG money, meaning that it's grant-funded, which means it has no expense or impact to the general fund here in the city. So yet again, another example of how our development team has been able to look for different ways to pay for parks projects and not have them impact the residents here in Los Alamos.
And this, this project, this, this contract is not for construction itself, it's for design and management service.
That is correct, sir. And part of the reason for that is that using CDBG funds comes with an entirely, I'll call it a robust amount of management that goes into it, because it is federal funding, there are a lot of different schedules and audits that have to occur during the course of the project, and so outsourcing that allows our staff to be free to go out and do other things that were, this is very specialty work as opposed to just a normal contract that we would run in-house.
And just because this is what's important to the residents, when do we anticipate the park actually being? the park actually being done?
That one's, I'm going to pass along, actually.
I know it's, estimate is fine, Ron.
Yeah, so after tonight, we're gonna have a kickoff meeting rather quickly. Our estimated timeline is by the end of 2023.
For completion of the construction?
For complete, completion of the, so we should have hopefully in early '24, a ribbon cutting with council at that time.
Sounds good, thank you.
All right. So can I get a motion on the consent calendar, please?
I'll move it.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, on to public hearing. This is the 2022 Building Standards Code and Fire Code Adoption. You're up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is actually the second reading of the ordinance that will actually update the standards and building codes for the city. This is an undertaking that we take in every cycle with the state of California, just to make sure that our building codes are consistent with state code.
Okay, anybody, this is a public hearing, so I need to open it up for public comment. Anybody out there? You're shy. All right, any, back to the council, any questions or comments?
I will make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Second.
Too slow.
Is this what we'll call out, Wendy? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. On to the discussion items. Resolution 2022-31, Minimum Wage Increase. City manager?
Madam Mayor, this is actually one of the last steps in increasing the state minimum wage in order to meet the state standard. We will move the state minimum from fif- or I'm sorry, the minimum from $15 an hour to $15.50 an hour. It does impact about 14 different hourly classifications that we have here in the city. However, those increases have already been accounted for within the adopted budget.
So on this one, is this public hearing? Hold on. Okay, so any, it's on to public hearing, so any questions or comments about that? All right, can I get a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? All right. Okay, item B, PERS Unfunded Actuary Liability. This is the one and only time I'll be saying that I'm excited about talking about unfunded pension liability, and I won't say that again for 12 more years.
You better not talk about it again for 12 years.
Nope, 12 years.
It's gonna go through 12.
The only time I'm excited about talking about this, so take it away.
And I will be handing the, the lion's share of this presentation over to, to our finance director, but I did wanna mention that unfunded liabilities have become quite a stain on local governments. It does seriously inhibit our ability to go out and do our core mission, which is providing service to the city. Many cities have tried to tackle this issue, some successfully, some not successfully. The fact that a city of this size is actually taking on this work now is, I think, a testament to the council's steadfastness to really bring the tenants of what was in the fiscal sustainability plan to light and put them into practice. Again, I think you'll see from the presentation, there are a number of cities who have tried to accomplish this, but I believe that this pay-down plan is not only ambitious, but definitely achievable at the end of the day, and I think that's the important thing. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Craig to take us through some of the slides.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Mayor Proton and council members. I am pleased to present a, for your consideration tonight, the PERS UAL Funding Plan. City manager mentioned, funding the PERS UAL is, it's going to be a significant step in managing the city's long-term financial future. It's not an accomplishment most cities have been able to undertake, particularly smaller agencies like City of Los Alamos. Examples of municipalities and agencies that have developed UAL funding plans include Manhattan Beach, Newport Beach, and OCFA. City's current UAL liability is approximately $18 million. The report for this plan was originally presented to council in June 21st, 2021, so we've been in the planning and discussion of this for about 18 months. Council at that point requested its staff to return to the Budget Standing Committee for further discussion. There were several meetings that followed that. We sought an outside expert or financial advisor through Pacific or Public Financial Management, also known as PFM, to provide analysis on the UAL funding options, and that was presented at the July 27th Special Budget Standing Committee. Options presented by PFM and that were reviewed by staff at that point included pay-as-you-go, which was basically our current payment methodology, was we just pay amount that's provided, that's our payment amount by CalPERS each year. We also looked at funding, hybrid funding, which is basically a percentage of contributions to, towards the UAL and infrastructure. We looked at eight additional discretionary payments, which is also known as ADP, fresh-start program, tax-exempt exchange, IRS Section 115 trust, and pension obligation bonds. The two options that, two options that PFM focused on were pension obligation bonds. Basically, we looked at a 15-year bond, estimated PV savings of approximately 1.9 million. The interest rate at July 27th for that was about 4.72%. We also looked at additional discretionary payment plan, which is ADP. We looked at 10, 12, and 15-year funding options. Savings for this range, as you can see from this chart, we're looking at 10-year, which is payments, basically annual payments of $540,000, estimated savings for that, right-hand column, about $3.6 million. For 12-year funding plan, annual payments of $260,000, savings estimated at $2.1 million. And for 15-year payments of $74,000 each, savings around $800,000. With the ADP funding for the 15 years, that's the smallest savings, that's roughly $800,000. Would provide a larger cash flow to the city, but UAL payment payoff would be further extended, costing additional money in interest. ADP funding for 10 years would provide the greatest savings at $3.6 million. However, this would restrict the cash flow and it would be, require larger yearly payments of about $540,000. ADP funding of 12 years is really the balanced approach, estimated savings of 2.2 million. This would be annual payments, would not restrict the cash flow, while we would, the city would be able to receive 100% funding paydown. This would ensure the city's ability to react to future state and CalPERS actuarial assumption changes, and of course, there's also market fluctuations that occur. For this reason, the Budget Standing Committee is recommending a UAL funding target of 12 Along with this, we're, for your consideration, is a draft UAL funding policy. Purpose of the policy is to provide guidance on the development and adoption of funding, of a funding plan for the UAL. Similar in practice and processes that have already been placed, as mentioned before, Manhattan Beach, Newport Beach, and OCFA have put these in place to address their UAL liabilities. This provides a framework to ensure proper management for future liabilities. It's a commitment to fiscal sustainability by employing long-term financial planning and utilization of ADP. It would be based on a 12-year target to reach the 100% UAL funding goal. With this draft policy, there's specific policy directions or directives to the city manager, and I'll read these. Starting with the '22-'23 budget cycle, the Los Alamos City Council will direct the city manager to incorporate within the annual budget ADP or additional discretionary payments of at least $260,000 in order to address the city's current PERS unfunded UAL. City manager is further directed to include the same $260,000 in subsequent budgets with the goal of achieving 100% funding within the 12 years of adoption of this policy. Additionally, upon completion of the city's annual independent financial audit, and should a surplus be identified and verified, at least 25% of the unidentified, of the identified and verified surplus will also be used to make an additional ADP payment. This payment is in addition to and does not supplant the already-directed $260,000 annual payment. Any change or to, to rescission to this policy would require an action approved by the city council during an open public hearing and requiring a finding of an extreme financial danger to the city's infrastructure or public safety. So that concludes my presentation, and I look forward to your questions.
I would like to mention also, Mayor and City Council, that, like Craig mentioned, this is a work that it took 18 months to, to accomplish. The Budget Standing Committee sat through many meetings where they had to look at different actuarial reports as to what exactly could be achieved through taking one of those different methods that were originally laid out by Craig and by our consultants. I believe that this gives us a very balanced approach where we are not completely hamstrung in terms of the investments that we need to make here locally, in terms of public safety and infrastructure, but it also allows us to account for changes that are happening at the state in terms of the investments that they are making, so that we have enough flexibility to address them as they come up. Again, I would just like to echo some of what was in the report in terms of just how uncommon this is for a city of our size to be able to take on something that will ultimately pay $2 million in dividends once it's completed.
Okay, any comments, questions?
Good job, guys.
And just some thought behind the 10, 12, and 15, we got really excited about the 10, because then we wouldn't have to talk this after 10 years, which would be great. But we also came back and realized these are additional payments, so it's in addition to what we're already doing. As we all know, we can't predict the future, we can't even predict tomorrow, and we thought this was the best approach and still take care of our city with the needs they want because nobody gets excited about, we don't have any money because we're paying down all the pensions that we weren't responsible for. So this gives us a nice balance that we can still take care of the city, we can still do really cool things that, that benefits our residents and our businesses, and still keep our promise that we're using our extra revenue from the sales tax money to, we have a plan with an end date, which we've never had before, so it's pretty exciting.
Yeah, this is, this is one of my main goals before I leave the council. You know, we, we went to the residents a couple of years ago about Measure Y. One of the big things we talked about was pension obligations, and we promised that we would use the money that they are providing, this is our tax money, in a wise way to address that issue. And we're addressing a bunch of other stuff as well, which is really important, like our infrastructure and, and all the great stuff that the city does. But one of the things that was at the heart of the pitch that we made to the residents was pensions, that's really the heart of the issue. And so I'm really proud that, assuming this passes, I'm really proud that we've got a plan. We're ahead of most cities. We're going to be saving $2.2 million, getting rid of this debt 12 years, perhaps a little bit sooner, but we're also not hamstringing the, the city from doing everything that it needs to do. I think this, this only amounts to about 1% of our annual budget, so it shouldn't be too hard to, to adjust and make this work. But I wanna say, you know, it wasn't just us, it was really Craig and Chet and others that did a lot of work trying to make this work and dealing with us being pushy and, and asking for more and more money to be set aside, but I think this is something we can all be proud of as a city. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions or clarifications from anybody? All right, so can I entertain a motion for Doc, Resolution Number 2023?
I'll move it.
I second.
Oh, can I second?
Oh, I'm sorry. Take it back.
I want a second. It's symbolic. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We've got an end game. Thank you very much. All right, on to item C, date change for the July fireworks spectacular.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As the council's aware, the city has received a request from the Joint Forces Training Base with regards to the event that is normally held on the 4th of July, the fireworks spectacular, to actually change that date to July 3rd. The reasoning behind that request is simply put is that we have a large contingent of military personnel that assist with that event on the 4th of July. As you recall, we are one of the few cities that were able to actually hold a 4th of July fireworks display and show during the pandemic because we were having it on an active base and had the, the support of the military to actually be able to do that. And so I wanna thank the National Guard for that. It was pointed out to us that this is an important holiday for obviously anyone who's ever served in uniform, and so the request was made to allow the military personnel to be able to be with their families and celebrate that date with their families. I will also say, just from a city operational standpoint, we obviously operating an event on a, on a holiday is sometimes difficult, just because, again, we have staff and police services that would like to be with their families on those days.
And I'll just add on a little bit more of that. The original conversation took place on the 4th of July on the base, and Colonel Vig came up to me, who's the base commander, and said, hey, would you guys consider moving this to July 3rd? I'm like, gave me some reasoning behind it, and she said, see all these soldiers out here? I mean, we're talking about the Army Band, all the extra patrol they have, the extra people at the gate, just the general that they wouldn't have if it wasn't 4th of July. He's like, none of these soldiers ever get to spend the 4th of July with their kids, none of them ever get to experience their kids lighting off fireworks for the first time, and, you know, they're human, the human factor came into it, and I honestly never even thought about that, that while we're all having fun during the 4th of July and entertaining our friends and family, they're working. And it seems like an easy fix, that we are not the only ones doing this, we are not canceling or moving the 4th of July, the 4th of July still happens on 4th of July. Cypress did it July 1st, Long Beach did it July 3rd, Seal Beach does it July 3rd. What it does, it gives, July 4th is truly a holiday. I'm sure the parents of the young kids would appreciate that on July 5th, they don't have to wake their children up after they've had a late night out attending fireworks celebrations. So it just makes a lot of sense, and especially with the next item that we're gonna be talking about. The 4th of July still exists as always, you're still gonna have your neighborhood parades, you're still gonna have your barbecues and your cook-offs, you're still gonna celebrate what the 4th of July is about, the fireworks the night before. That's, that's what we're asking to change, and for all the right reasons. So with that, any questions or comments?
I have a quick clarifying question. So if we still wanted to do it at the base, but say provide our own staff, you can't do that, right? You can't bring other people to work on a base, like it has to be their personnel on their base, right?
So we could always augment more staff at the base, there would be, obviously, costs that goes along with that, but I do not believe that they would allow us to run a complete operation at the base without military personnel present.
And there's also with, you know, the Army Band. Have you heard our city band? Because they're not real good. You know, so it's, there's just certain thing about that military presence that is really cool, and I never, ever wanna put them where they're gonna have to make a difficult decision because we weren't willing to budge, so their families could have the family time like we all do.
Well, it's just the 4th of July Eve, like we got Christmas Eve, we got Christmas Day, it's not like, we're celebrating longer.
Right, exactly, we're making it bigger.
We dragging it out.
Right.
They're our partner. I mean, if they ask us to accommodate something, then we're gonna reasonably try to do that, I think. I mean, we can't, I, I don't even think we could go to them now and say, no, we're rejecting your request anyway. It's their base.
Right, and we could, and they could say, well, we're not available on the 4th of July. That, that's, we, we lose, you know, so we either have a fireworks show on July 3rd, she made it very clear that, you know, and she's new in command there, and she just wants to make sure that her soldiers have the, the proper time off to celebrate Independence Day for the, all the soldiers fighting for our freedom, and that they have to work.
It's kinda like if your birthday's on a Thursday, you're gonna celebrate on Friday. It's kinda like that.
Or just like me, my birthday's right by Christmas. Celebrate the whole month.
Yeah, exactly.
There you go.
So, like I say, I, I think we lose a lot by not being flexible, and we gain a lot by being flexible. That's just my two cents.
Just the fireworks, though, it's not.
Yeah, we're not, we're not making everybody do their parades on July 3rd and do their barbecues on July 3rd.
Well, now we don't have to split time.
Right.
Because I know somebody that gets carted away during the 4th of July celebration, so they can go to their neighborhood and hang out, but I'm not calling any names.
Anyway. Any comments? Can I quickly get a motion on this, so we can change the subject?
I'll move it.
I'll stick it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, Chet, can you let Colonel Vic know of our official decision?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. All right, the next and last piece, I believe, is ordinance 2022-07, Regulation and Sale of Fireworks. Now, let's see, manager, take this one.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Since December 1986, the city has had an ordinance in place which has banned the use of safe and sane fireworks and prohibited the sale of the same. The item before you tonight is actually a consideration of an ordinance that would allow for the use of safe and sane fireworks by the public on July 4th, as well as the regulated sale of those fireworks within the city limits. Currently, as I'm sure you are well, there are 10 cities within the city, or within the county, that allow for the use of safe and sane fireworks on July 4th. We have listed a few of the main tenets of this proposal. Essentially, that first, the use of safe and sane fireworks would be allowed only on July 4th between the hours of 10:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. This would be limited to residential properties and residential streets. Fireworks would still be prohibited in commercial or industrial properties at city parks and facilities. Also, if adopted, any individual found to be in violation of these regulations would be subject to a $1,000 fine, which then would escalate with each occurrence. Next, the sale of safe and sane fireworks would be allowed starting on July 1st through the 4th. It would also highlight the necessary permits and safety plans that would be required in order to operate a sales location. We have reached out to our industry partners and then also to neighboring cities that also do allow the sale of fireworks, and based on these conversations, it's been determined that permitting two sales locations in the city would be the recommended number at this time. And then finally, to the operation of those locations, it's been, I think, a well-established custom at this point for cities to delegate the operation and management of these locations to area nonprofits in order for them to serve as fundraisers for the good that they do in the community. Given the limited number of sales locations that we would be recommending here in the city, and the large number of nonprofits that we have in town, the city, or more aptly, staff has recommended a scheme which would actually allow for all of the nonprofits to participate and possibly generate revenue from these sites. Essentially, what it would call for would be that the management of these sites would be given over to the Los Alamos Community Foundation, and as part of the permitting process, the Los Alamos Community Foundation would be required to provide working shifts to these other nonprofits, so that they were able to actually share in the revenue generated from these sites. There are obviously a number of safety concerns that go along with the use of any type of firework, and so the staff report does detail out the number of calls for service that the police department has received in the past, and also some of the experiences that neighboring cities have had with the use of safe and sane fireworks, and also some comments from OCFA detailing the number of injuries and then also damage that has been done by fireworks in the past, and how exactly those numbers have grown over the year. Obviously, we have staff here that is ready and able to answer any specific questions about the use of safe and sane fireworks or the permitting scheme that has been presented.
Well, I had a question. Will the people who will be working at the location for the sale of the fireworks, will they have any special training? And then also, who will be monitoring the area after 10:00 p.m. to ensure, you know, that it's not vandalized or trespassed on?
So the requirements that go along with the permitting of those sites will be the responsibility of the Los Alamos Community Foundation. They will be required to have a significant amount of insurance in order to be able to pay for any damage that may or may not take place. They also are required to keep people on site in order to ensure the safety of the site. Those sites will also be known to city staff, and so we will be able to keep an eye on them as well and have patrol checks as well.
And then in regards to training?
Training is also provided from the different private technical companies that are available. So there are two that operate mostly in Orange County, one is TNT and the other is Phantom, thank you. And they do provide training to the sales staff, especially things to look for.
And will the cost for the training be offset by the profit that's made from the sale of the fireworks?
It is usually part, is built into the scheme that they have in place with how the purchase of the fireworks happens from those different vendors.
Thank you.
Yeah, so basically, what happens is the foundation would be responsible, it's usually parked in an RV at the two fireworks stands, usually with the dog that barks when there's activity outside, but what's nice is it's a four-day fundraiser. And as far as the stand and everything, the fireworks company comes and sets that up, they bring in the inventory, they restock it, so it's basically just the point of sale that the nonprofits would be responsible for. I mean, we have fireworks here, and if you doubt me, come down to Farquhar on the Fourth of July, it's Armageddon there. And, you know, right now, you can go to Valley View and Chapman and buy fireworks, and you can go to Valley View and Ball in Buena Park and buy fireworks. The fact that they're going to buy them anyway, and they're going to bring them in here, and they're going to do the sparklers and everything else, why not have our nonprofits benefit from that? They're going to be here anyway, and talking to the chief and OCFA, it's just a necessary evil, and they're not worried about the sparklers, they're more worried about the bottle rockets that go up there that happen whether fireworks are legal or not, because last year, we had five really good shows in addition to the base, all from our neighborhoods here, so I don't think it's going to make anything worse, because like I say, the safe and sane fireworks tend not to start the roof fires and everything else, so I just think it's something that, you know, we can do for our residents, and there's another celebration for the Fourth of July.
That's what I was impressed with, the contribution at OCFA, their blurb that they gave, was how much safer the safe and sane fireworks are. And I was surprised by that, because they ran some numbers, and they were like, oh, comparatively, during this time, these types of fireworks, they're the ones that set your house on fire, blow your hand off, and rearrange your face. That's not the safe and sane fireworks. I think that's important for people to note. Number one, our firefighters, they know how to deal with the little baby fireworks. It's the other ones that people are more inclined to get when they can't get a sparkler or whatever. I grew up with fireworks, I've worked in the fireworks, we called them fireworks shacks, and I would personally be excited to be able to go out in the street and...
Write your name.
Yeah, with the sparklers, yeah.
Yeah, just for what it's worth, my experience is different. I mean, I don't see any, we don't see any fireworks in our neighborhood, I think because people in our neighborhood, maybe this isn't the same everywhere, but at least the people that I talk to know that they're illegal, so they just don't do it. I mean, you actually have some people following the rules, I guess. But I did poll a number of neighbors and just asked them, you know, what are your thoughts on this? And the majority of people I polled, you know, whether it was by text message or in person, said, why are we going to change this? Things are good now, you're going to get a lot of people complaining about their animals. My dog doesn't care, I don't care, you know, but some people's pets do care, and most of the feedback I got from the people I talked to was that they requested we don't change it, that they're worried, you know, why do we need this? Yes, there's always ways to fundraise, you know, we have a lot of fundraising in our city, and it would benefit, I do see it would benefit, including, you know, our own foundation, which is great, but, you know, that is the feedback that I got from residents, so that's...
Yeah, and I think, and it's not really about the fundraising, that's just an added bonus, but I really think, especially with the base asking us to move something to July 3rd, you don't think we're going to have fireworks here on July 4th?
Maybe, or people go to another show.
Yeah, I mean, I know in Apartment Row and Carrier Row, it is literally Armageddon on the Fourth of July, it is unbelievable, and it goes well past 10 o'clock.
Yeah, I mean, we don't have to get into a big debate about this, because I'm just expressing my opinion here, but, you know, the idea that we say, well, people aren't following the rules anyway, so let's change the rules, so that what they're doing is now legal, you know, I don't see it as a huge risk either way, I'm just letting you know where I'm coming out on it.
Okay.
Yeah, I see it more like now we have something additional, because what about people that don't have family to go and be with, or that is their highlight, is to go to the base, and we're doing it on the 3rd now, so now they're just kind of sitting around on the 4th. And the fireworks that you can buy off of a little stand, they're not the big booms, they're, you know, like a little
Understood.
A little something, and that's the only reason that I'm like, oh, because I see the next door about the people having to medicate their animals, and although I don't have one, I can still feel the compassion for them, but you can't buy that off the fireworks shack, you're going to get like a little, I can scream louder than some of these fireworks, I'm not going to do it.
Thank you.
Than some of these fireworks are, and I just think it's something, it's not, it's in addition to. I like to be as inclusive as possible, as often as possible, and that's kind of what it is to me, it's just another way to make sure, you know what, because I was actually trying to pitch to Chet, like, why don't we make a little place for people that want to come together on the 4th that don't have a fun and festive neighborhood thing that they've got going, and they want to have that coming together, and we have some food trucks, and it can be over where there's selling the fireworks or whatever, and make it like another independent, just Los Alamos. We haven't partnered with anybody, Seal Beach ain't involved, we love them, Cypress ain't involved, we love them, but it's just Los Alamos, and I think that that would be, you know, my city, my Los Alamos.
What is the estimated return for making the sale of the fireworks over that time?
That is actually, it's a very good question, and I'll tell you, it's one that we were able, not able to get a good, solid answer to. That being said, I do know that depending on the number of stands that you have in town, I have seen some stands generate between $15,000 profit, I've seen stands that have generated up to near $80,000 profit, again, depending on the number of stands and where exactly they're located.
And that's four days. If there's no other discussion, can I entertain, or do you need to read this first? No, I'm so confused. It's an ordinance.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't.
Oh, look at them, that's... I did go to law school last year.
Thank you, Mayor, my apologies. For the City Council, for consideration this evening, is ordinance 2022-07, entitled, In Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Los Alamos, California, Adding Chapter 5.60 Fireworks to Title V of the Los Alamos Municipal Code Relating to the Regulation and Sale of Fireworks.
All right, can I get a motion, please?
I'll move it.
I'll second.
All right, is this a real, this is a real call. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right, so motion passes, and I believe that's an adjournment. All right, see you in December.